This hearing will include Columbus City Council's Health and Human Services, Finance, and Workforce Development Committees. I am Councilmember Priscilla Tyson, President Pro Tem of Columbus City Council and Chair of the Committees. Before we begin, please be aware that this hearing is being recorded for rebroadcast on CTV, Columbus Government Television Channel 3. The rebroadcast schedule is available at www.columbus.gov. This hearing is one in a series of bi-weekly committee hearings I hold in order to review legislation in the committees that I chair. This includes Health and Human Services, Finance, and Workforce Development Committees. The goal of these hearings is to promote transparency and provide an opportunity for city residents to learn and speak on legislation that impacts their lives. There will be on occasion when a committee is not covered because legislation is not always scheduled for each committee. The intent of each hearing is to review the legislation that will be on City Council's agenda for the following two weeks. Tonight, we will hear information on legislation in Finance and Health and Human Services and Development. The presenters this evening include from the Department of Finance and Management Chris Long, the Fiscal Manager, from the Department of Development Hannah Reid, Assistant Director, and from Columbus Public Health Nancy Bechtel, Assistant Commissioner and Chief Nursing Officer. Did I say Assistant Health Commissioner? Did I say that? Okay. I will begin with Legislation in the Finance Committee and will ask Chris Long to present legislation from the Finance Department. Good evening.
Good evening, President Pro Tem Tyson. Tonight, we have a total of eighteen ordinances for your consideration. First for discussion tonight is Ordinance 1254-2017. This would be an ordinance to authorize the city auditor, excuse me, to transfer $2,835 between sub-funds of the CDBG or Community Development Block Grant Fund and to authorize the Director of the Department of Finance and Management to expend $18,835 from the CDBG revolving loan fund for payment of interest earnings. Essentially, it's where required to turn over a certain percentage of any interest that we would earn or the city would earn or accumulate on community development block grant dollars. And so, we're required to turn those over for each fiscal year. And so, these are just accumulated interest dollars that we would like the authority to turn those back over.
Thank you, Chris. And certainly, I know we have to get those dollars back, but the other area that I just wanted to just mention, and maybe you could speak briefly on this, is certainly there's been a lot of discussion at the federal level about CDBG and that possibly not continuing to support CDBG grants. And can you just share a little bit about what we would face if that was to happen?
Sure. I think we're all troubled, frankly, by some of the discussions that are happening at the federal level with respect to, you know, severe cuts to the CDBG program. Frankly, we're currently in conversations with the Department of Development to ascertain what those cuts would mean, different scenarios about what we think those cuts could be for the city, what would that mean for programs. I mean, I can certainly provide a report to you and work in connection with Development Department to put something together to give you an idea of what that would look like.
Thank you, Chris. I know those are really important dollars to our community, and so I think it's important that our community realizes what we could possibly lose, the programs that we've had in the past, and then certainly those same programs will be important for us moving forward. So, that would be some helpful information. Thank you so much.
Sure, happy to. Our next ordinance for your consideration is Ordinance 1276-2017. This is an ordinance that seeks authority for the Finance and Management Director to enter into a contract on behalf of our Facilities Management Division with 2K General for the renovation service of man doors and gate systems under the purview of the Facilities Management Division. Just kind of in layman's terms, man doors would be essentially just walk-through doors, nothing that would be big enough to drive equipment through, just your everyday standard doors, and then various gate systems at our facilities, both motorized gating systems and just standard non-motorized gate systems. So, this is a new bid, a new formal bid that was solicited, and 2K General was deemed the most responsive and responsible.
Thank you.
The next ordinance is Ordinance 1278-2017. This seeks authority for the Finance Management Director to enter into a contract on behalf of the Office of Construction Management with RW Sederlin Building Company for $7.8 million. This is to construct a new fueling facility on Crager Court, which is located between Georgesville and Alkiere, just, I guess it would be just west of 270. This fueling station would be a little different than the two previous compressed natural gas stations that were constructed in that it will not only have compressed natural gas, but it will also have petroleum-based fueling there, unleaded and diesel. The reason the decision was made to go with a sort of a joint fueling facility was that it will enable us to shut down five petroleum-based fueling sites around the city, which will not only save money, but will also help prevent possibly remediation environmental issues down the road. As those five fueling sites have underground fuel tanks, this new fueling system, fueling station, will have above ground, much easier to maintain and track and service.
And who will be the primary users of the CNG station?
Yes, we anticipate that the Department of Public Service, specifically the Refuge Collection Division and their Infrastructure Management Divisions will be using that site, and also a primary user will be Fire Station 31.
Thank you. And this will now be our, let's see, we have, first was on the east side, and then we have now the east side, the north side on Morris Road, central, we locate it, we have a partnership agreement with COTA, and then this one will be on the west side.
That is correct.
All four quadrants of our city. All right. So, thank you very much. Excited about having our fourth, pretty much our fourth CNG station. And, oh, one question, will the public be able to use this facility?
Yes, we will make sure that compressed natural gas only would be available for public sale. The unleaded and diesel portion would be closed for use by only city departments and divisions. And we anticipate, President Pro Tem Tyson, that this station will come online early 2018, or anticipating possibly January or February of 2018.
Thank you so much. And just want to say I am real appreciative also of Fleet Management for, the Fleet Management and really the administration for focusing on our environment with having CNG, but also just the greening of our fleet. And so, I want to say a special thank you to Kelly and his team at Fleet. Thank you.
Well, and thank you as well. We, through the years, have been very supportive and, you know, frankly, helped these initiatives come to reality. So, very thankful for all your support in adopting these new alternative fuel technologies. Ordinance 1310-2017 is our next ordinance. This seeks the authority to establish a universal term contract for Emotron parts, excuse me, and service, really on behalf of the Department of Public Utilities, specifically their sewer and drain division. And this would be to purchase parts for their aeration process at their Jackson Pike wastewater treatment plant primarily.
Thank you.
Ordinance 1322-2017 is next. This seeks authority to establish a universal term contract for Maxon valves. Once again, this would be primarily used by the Department of Public Utilities, and these Maxon valves would be used to control natural gas and digester gas that feed the plant boilers and incinerators at various public utilities locations. Ordinance 1334-2017 is next. This seeks authority for the Finance and Management Director to essentially extend a current lease agreement with YTD Sinclair Road LLC. This would be for leased space for use by the Public Safety Department. It's essentially for use by their covert operations unit. And this facility meets all of their current needs. The current lease is set to expire here in about a month, and so this seeks authority to renew the lease with five possible renewal options subject to City Council approval.
Thank you. Certainly want to make sure that we want to provide the space that is necessary for operations from Public Safety. Thank you.
Ordinance 1336-2017 is next. This seeks authority to establish a universal term contract for liquid calcium chloride, which is primarily used, I think exclusively used by our Department of Public Service for the removal of snow and ice, obviously during inclement weather conditions.
I think this is used, you're right, for the inclement weather, and we certainly don't want that to come back anytime soon. But I think that this mixes with our road salt and helps us to amplify the ice melt, so to make our roads safer sooner for our residents to travel to and from, so.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ordinance 1352-2017 is our next ordinance. This seeks authority for the Finance and Management Director to enter into a contract on behalf of our Office of Construction Management with 2K General. This would be for Phase 1C of the overall modernization project at Municipal Court, and this is focused specifically on elevator modernization. So, currently, there's eleven total elevators at the Municipal Court, and this would be a modernization project for all eleven.
What's the timeline for this project?
We anticipate, I have some notes here. The anticipated completion date is February of 2019.
Okay.
And it's a mix of public and public-use elevators, and then elevators that are used specifically just by court personnel.
Okay. And can you talk to me a little bit about how construction management will be working with the courts to really minimize the disruption that could happen to the day-to-day operations in the court system?
Yes, the way the elevator project is designed to be rolled out is that they're phasing the elevator modernization. So, only certain elevators will be down at any one point in time, and then as, you know, two or three elevators are modernized, then they kind of move on and keep modernizing until all eleven are completed. And certainly, they'll be working in conjunction with court personnel to make sure that whatever process is followed doesn't disrupt the daily activities of the court.
Thank you. Certainly want to also say thank you to Director Lombardi, and I know that Kathy Owens and have been working with the judges, and so just appreciate, obviously, the modernization of their elevators, but also just the modernization of their facilities. So, I appreciate the whole team's work on, working with the courts.
Thank you, President Pro Tem Tyson. Ordinance 1381-2017 is our next ordinance. This seeks authority to establish a universal term contract for Morno pumps and pump parts. These would be used by the Department of Public Utilities largely for pump replacement and repair on existing equipment at the Southerly and Jackson Pike wastewater treatment plants. Ordinance 1390-2017. This ordinance seeks authority for the Finance and Management Director to enter into a contract on behalf of our Facilities Management Division with Buxton Group LLC. This would be for essentially roof repair supplies and services to be used by our Facilities Management Division on city properties, city buildings. This was a formally bid solicitation. Two bids were received, and Buxton was deemed the most responsive, responsible bidder.
Thank you. I know last year, I think that we had $10,000 for roof repair, and so do, and this one's for $25,000. So, are there, have you gotten information that says that we are needing more repair work to our roofs?
Yes, it's a great question. The Facilities Management Division has been working with our Office of Construction Management. They've engaged a vendor, and the name escapes me, but I can get that to you, that have begun doing facility assessments on city buildings and properties, and they've begun to identify that there's becoming a larger need to not only maintain their existing roofs, but repair roofs that are falling into disrepair, they become large capital, like replacing the whole roof. So, yeah, and I think we'll see an uptick next year and the year after. We're trying to ramp up servicing our city buildings, and, you know, roof repair is one of those line items.
Certainly. I would tell you that I'm happy that you guys are doing these assessments, and you're right. If we can minimize the repairs before, you know, the cost of repairs before they become, you know, major capital projects, then that saves the taxpayers money. So, I appreciate the assessment that you're doing and catching issues before they become major issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Ordinance 1391-2017. This seeks authority for our Finance and Management Director to enter into a contract on behalf of our Facilities Management Division with Ohio Technical Services. This would be for the inspection, testing, removal, and remediation of hazardous materials at city facilities, once again, under the purview of our Facilities Management Division. This is a new formal bid solicitation that was, excuse me, that was processed. There was only one bid response received, and that was with Ohio Technical Services. And so, we would seek authorization to enter into a contract with them.
And again, last year, we spent about $19,000, and this one's $230,000. Can you share why we're spending so much money this year?
Yes, in large part, it's for lead filter remediation over at the Public Safety Shooting Range. And so, there are specialty HVAC filters that actually capture lead dust at the shooting range, and they're very expensive to have those filters removed, and not only removed from the HVAC system, but then disposed of, and new filters replaced. So, a good portion of that money will be around replacing all of the filters over at the shooting range. Ordinance 1396-2017 seeks authority for the Finance and Management Director to modify an existing contract on behalf of our Office of Construction Management with Roger D. Fields and Associates for professional engineering services. And this is related largely to some additional HVAC controls, design work that needs to be done at the Police Academy. Their HVAC controls are simply becoming aged, and so we will seek authority through council and through your office at some point in the future to put forth a capital project to replace those HVAC system controls. This would be Phase 1, just to design it, to understand what's wrong with the existing controls and what would a new control system look like.
This will all be for safety?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Ordinance 1398-2017 is our next ordinance. This seeks, excuse me, seeks authority for our Finance and Management Director to modify and renew an existing city contract with KNS Services to provide service maintenance for our security systems for facilities under the purview of our Facilities Management Division. So, this is largely to service our security cameras, our matrix readers on our doors, all of the infrastructure that feeds those systems, so computer systems, server systems, for camera backups, things of that nature.
Thank you.
Ordinance 1399-2017 is our next ordinance. This seeks authority for the Finance and Management Director to enter into a contract with the Franklin County Public Defender Commission to continue to provide legal counsel to innocent persons charged with criminal offenses. This is an annual contract that we enter into with the court to assist us with public defender work on behalf of our citizens.
And I see the cost has gone up. Previous years was $903,000, and then this year's budget, of course, has gone up a little bit higher, and can you share with me why the costs are going up at the court system?
Yes, unfortunately, the portion that the state of Ohio is reimbursing local municipalities is continuing to drop. This year alone, it's dropped by five percentage points. And so, we were frankly surprised, and not in a good way, that this cost was going to be that much higher for this year. But it is largely driven by the drops in state funding that's being pushed down to the local levels.
Thank you. That is certainly not good for cities to have to absorb those costs because our court, those costs haven't gone down, and certainly would like to have those reimbursements, but all right, state fiscally impacting us. Thank you.
This seeks authority to essentially refinance an existing note related to several city-owned parking garages located at Fourth and Elm and also located at Front and Rich Streets. The existing note is, will be set to expire, and so this would seek authority to issue a new note to replace the old note. But it is worth noting that the note balance continues to decline due to the revenues that we receive from those parking garages, and this refinance would allow us to continue to service those notes going forward.
Thank you, Chris. I certainly want to thank our auditor for the work that he is doing in terms of always identifying opportunities to save our residents' dollars, and the refunding of these notes on our city-owned garages is pretty significant. When you think about in 2009, the note was $29.5 million, and last year, so you're talking about in from the eight-year period to now, but in a seven-year period, that amount of money was $11.8 million. And so, more than half of that was already gone in a, you know, seven-year or eight-year period, seven-year period at that time. And now, we're looking at this note being from $11.8 million last year to the note being $8.5 this year. That's significant. And so, again, just basically showing the use of those parking garages are more than paying for themselves and providing some, providing resources to our community, but also reducing the burden of tax, on our taxpayers by, you know, having a lower interest rates, and the revenue was just great. So, I want to thank the auditor and thank the finance team. Thank you.
Ordinance 1407-2017 is our next ordinance. This seeks authority to modify and renew an existing contract with Mid-Ohio Air Conditioning. This would be for service, renovation, repair, and installation of HVAC systems under the purview of the Facilities Management Division. I think about a month ago, we had a similar ordinance that we presented to you also with Mid-Ohio. That was for chillers, one of them being here at City Hall. This one is the same company, but a separate contract, a separate bid, and it would be basically to service not just only air conditioning, but heating and ventilating systems. And this was, this is one of those contracts that's going to be jointly funded by the Department of Finance and the Department of Public Safety, as Mid-Ohio would do work not only on, you know, finance-related issues, but also on public safety facilities.
Thank you. So, this contract's for $150,000, and Public Safety is paying $100,000, correct?
That's correct.
All right. Thank you.
Ordinance 1411-2017 is the next ordinance. This seeks authority to establish a universal term contract for traffic pedestrian signal equipment for use by the Division of, or Department of Public Service as the sole or primary user.
And this UTC would be, estimate the spend is $80,000, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
And our final ordinance for your consideration this evening is Ordinance 1412-2017. This seeks authority to establish a universal term contract for traffic signal detector equipment, also for use by our Department of Public Service as the primary user.
Thank you very much. And again, that UTC, the estimated amount is about $80,000.
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Long.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Kathy Owens, for being in chambers, and Kendall Owens for being in chambers also. Glad to see you. All right, our next presenter is going to be from the Department of Development, Ms. Hannah Reid. Good evening.
Good evening, Chair Tyson. We have one ordinance for your consideration this evening. Ordinance 1237-2017 is our annual allocation of $133,784 to the community research partners. CRP provides technical assistance and data-sharing services. Some of their, I'm sorry, we work with CRP each year to develop a list of projects to fulfill our annual 669-hour allocation, and those 669 hours are spread between various departments, City Council, and the Mayor's Office. Some of the current projects that they're working on with us include the Large Apartment Inventory, human trafficking, that's championed by Council President Klein, the millennial student debt study, and we've worked with Columbus Public Health and their focus groups. CRP provides monthly project progress reports back to the department to keep track of their projects. And I know Lynette Cook, the executive director, was trying to make her way down, but she had a conflict. I believe she was down earlier this year when we did our annual human services hearing to speak on CRP and the work they do with the city. If you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions, Hannah. Thank you. This is for, $133,784, and just really do appreciate the research that they do so that as a city, we would be able to implement projects based upon the research of community research partners.
Yep.
Thank you very much. And yes, she was here for our human service hearings.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, so, and our final presenter this evening is going to be Nancy Bechtel from the Department of Columbus Public Health. The floor is yours.
Thank you so much. Good evening. So, our first ordinance tonight is Ordinance 1300-2017, which is to authorize a contract with Equitas Health. The purpose of this ordinance is to authorize a $50,000 contract with Equitas Health, formerly the Aids Resource Center, to continue our partnership to support and expand a community-wide comprehensive harm reduction program called SafePoint. Columbus, along with other major cities, is plagued by an opiate epidemic that is a crisis of unparalleled proportion with devastating, often deadly, consequences. The harm reduction services provided by Equitas Health during 2016 were responsible for 60% of clients to that service having access to the life-saving drug naloxone. According to client data, 187 lives were saved because of naloxone access provided by SafePoint. Forty-four percent of clients were given access to an alcohol and drug consultant. Thirteen percent of clients received referrals for medical services, and another 13% of clients were provided referrals to behavioral health services. In total, the program served 1,319 clients in 2016.
Thank you, Nancy. The opiate crisis is, of course, very real in our community, and it's all over this country, and I'm glad that Columbus Public Health is taking action, spearheading innovative solutions with community partners, as you shared above, some of the statistics of the lives that have been saved by this particular, by providing this naloxone through our SafePoint. And so, simultaneously, we're working together as a city, county, and other community partners, Adam H., the Coroner's Office, and a task force for a larger, community-wide opiate plan. And I tell you, just really just thankful for it, and for those in the general listening audience to have an understanding of just the opioid epidemic ongoing in Columbus around this country, you should try to read the book Dreamland. I think it gives you just a really good perspective of what's really going on. And in this particular book, they reference Columbus, Ohio, a lot, and of course Portsmouth and other places, but it gives a, I think- But it gives a, I think, our residents a really good understanding of how this has all happened. And I just appreciate that we're trying to think outside the box of how to, solutions of how do we move forward. I think that we're also going to require the healthcare systems getting, you know, they are engaged, but thinking outside the box solutions for individuals who now have this new illness. So, I thank you for what you're doing. And so, if people aren't familiar with how SafePoint works and the program works, can you just share a little bit about the programming at SafePoint?
Sure. It's a walk-in program. Any clients or family members or loved ones of people with substance use disorder can go to a SafePoint location and get any of the services. So, they can get a counseling service or an assessment. They can get supportive counseling if they are a loved one. They can get naloxone. We will give them clean needles if they want clean needles, because we're trying to reduce the spread of HIV and hepatitis C. They can get referral for other medical care. I'll give you the site hours. So, there's two sites right now that Equitas operates. One is at the Equitas Health Short North Center. The address is 1033 North High Street. And their walk-in hours are Saturday morning, 8:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m., and Tuesday from 3:00 to 5:30 p.m. Their second site is at Southeast Inc. at 524 West Broad Street, and they're open Friday mornings from 8:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. And again, you don't need an appointment. Come on in, and we'll be glad to help you with wherever you are with your substance use disorder. We always hope that people will move towards treatment and abstinence. But in the meantime, the purpose of the program is to keep clients as healthy and alive for the day that they're ready to get treatment.
And whether if a family, if a family member knows that someone in their family has a new, has an opioid addiction, can they come there and get naloxone, I'm saying Narcan, can they come and get it from, from SafePoint? Or what would you recommend to a family member?
They can come to SafePoint, and, and we're happy to give them supportive counseling as well. But the other thing that the public needs to know is that legislation passed where they can go to a local pharmacy like CVS or Walgreens and get naloxone, purchase naloxone over the counter, even if it's not for themselves, even if it's for a loved one. And a lot of private insurances will even help with the copay for that, because they know that if you're buying it, you may be buying it for someone who may need you to administer it to them. And we would encourage everybody to, that knows someone or that thinks they might encounter someone who's experiencing an overdose to have naloxone, because it is a life-saving drug.
Thank you, Nancy. And certainly, this council is President Klein, and this entire body is certainly focused on doing all that we can to be able to, to help fight this epidemic, this illness in our community. So, thank you for the work that you're doing.
So, the next ordinance is 1305-2017, and it's to set up an impressed petty cash fund for the farmers' markets that we have at Columbus Public Health. So, we'll be hosting three farmers' markets in 2017. The markets will be held on July 27th, August 3rd, and August 10th at Columbus Public Health Facility at 240 Parsons Avenue. This ordinance establishes an impressed petty cash operating fund in the amount of $7,500 for the three markets, with a breakdown of $2,500 for each market, for the reimbursement to farmers who accept the electronic benefits, or EBT, transfer services for market customers using the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, or SNAP, and the Veggie SNAP Farmers' Markets Nutrition Incentive Program, tokens as payments during the markets.
Thank you. This is important that we have this petty cash fund, so that, again, the people that you just mentioned who have to use the SNAP cards or Veggie SNPs and have the opportunity to, to use those products to be able to pay for their healthy food. And so, tell me, I know I've been at most of the farmers' markets, and, but how long has Columbus Public Health been having these farmers' markets in the community?
We've been doing them since 2005, and they get more and more folks who come every year and take advantage of the great fresh produce.
Thank you. It is a highlight from, of mine to come to the opening of the farmers' market, to look forward to it this year. And certainly, it is so important as part of our Local Food Action Plan, that making sure people have access to healthy, affordable, local food. And so, this is a part of that, fulfilling the recommendations of that plan. And you've just stated the dates, and so, just ask people just to come out to 10 till 1 o'clock on the July 23rd, August, July, July 27th, August 3rd, and August 10th, to be able to come to the wonderful farmers' markets on, to get the address on Parsons Avenue. Did you mention the address, Nancy?
Yes, 240 Parsons Avenue.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much.
So, our next ordinance is number 1380-2017, and this is to accept and appropriate funds for the Public Health Emergency Preparedness Grant Program. So, Columbus Public Health has been awarded a grant from the Ohio Department of Health originating from the Centers for Disease Control. This ordinance is needed to accept and appropriate $789,335 in grant monies to fund the 2017-2018 Public Health Emergency Preparedness Grant Program for the period of July 1st, 2017 through July 30th, 2018. So, the Office of Emergency Preparedness writes and maintains the Columbus Public Health Emergency Response Plan. This plan contains over 50 planning annexes, which include the Infectious Disease Response and the Environmental Health Hazard Response, and multiple mitigation plans covering Columbus and Worthington jurisdictions. We rely on this plan for our safety in the event of any natural or man-made disaster.
Thank you. Certainly important for us to receive these funds, as for the reasons you just mentioned. Thank you.
Next ordinance is 1384-2017, and this is for a contract with Franklin County Public Health. Columbus Public Health was awarded the $789,335 in grant monies that I just mentioned, ordinance 1380-2017, from the Ohio Department of Health, originating from the Centers for Disease Control for the Public Health Emergency Preparedness Program. So, this ordinance is needed to authorize a contract with Franklin County Public Health for $191,373.28 for the time period July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018. The purpose of this contract is to maintain a public health, emergency preparedness, and emergency response system in the event of bioterrorism activities in central Ohio. This contract is necessary per the requirements of the Ohio Department of Health Public Emergency Preparedness Program. So, the Office of Emergency Preparedness, again, prepares and writes the Columbus Public Health Emergency Response Plan. And Columbus and Franklin County Public Health is a partner with us in our plan.
Thank you.
Okay, the next ordinance is number 1406-2017 for the OSU Wexner Medical Center contract for our Ryan White Grant. So, ordinance number 0489-2017, which was approved by City Council on March 27th, 2017, authorized the Board of Health to enter into a contract with OSU Internal Medicine LLC in the amount of $240,000 to provide HIV-related somatic medical care for the Ryan White HIV Care Part A Grant Program for the period of March 1st, 2017 through February 28th, 2018. Prior to the execution of the contract, OSU Internal Medicine LLC was acquired by the Ohio State University OSU Wexner Medical Center. This ordinance is needed to authorize the Board of Health to enter into the contract with the Ohio State University OSU Wexner Medical Center in the amount of $240,000 to provide HIV-related somatic medical care for the Ryan White HIV Care Part A Grant Program for the period of March 1st, 2017 through February 28th, 2018. The purpose of the HIV Care Part A Grant Program is to improve access to medical care for persons living with HIV or AIDS in central Ohio. The goal is that each client will receive viral suppression, which improves their quality of life and reduces the risk of spreading infection. And this grant in 2016 served 2,448 clients.
Thank you, Nancy. And certainly, I appreciate the partnership that, with Ohio State, State Wexner Medical Center, to provide, especially the outpatient inventory of medical services to individuals in our community who may have HIV or AIDS. And clearly, as you mentioned, just to reduce the viral suppression rates within these individuals and help to have them to have a great, wonderful move forward with their quality of life. So, I'm just very happy that we're getting these dollars from the federal government. And certainly, I know that we are very much focused on ensuring that the numbers go down in terms of people contracting this particular illness, and certainly, the focus on African American males who are continuing to contract the disease that other communities, certainly, the numbers are going down, but in the African American community, those numbers are going up. And so, hopefully, with working with, I know that we're doing a lot to prevent that, the PREP program, and to ensure that more people are not contracting this illness. And so, I appreciate the work that you're doing, and for those who do contract the disease, certainly, happy that we have the resources from the federal government to be able to help individuals move forward in their lives. So, thank you very much for the work that you're doing, and I appreciate this legislation to help our community.
Thank you. So, the last ordinance I bring tonight is ordinance 1414-2017, and this is to authorize an appropriate funds to Columbus Public Health in support of the Community Resiliency Program. This ordinance authorizes an appropriation of $175,000 to Columbus Public Health within the Neighborhood Initiative Sub-Fund in support of Columbus Public Health's Community Resiliency Program, which is a pilot initiative of the Columbus CARE Coalition, which the CARE Coalition is an acronym for Community Action, Resilience, and Empowerment. The objective of the Community Resiliency Program is to utilize the existing infrastructure of the current CARE Coalition to address neighborhood resiliency within Linden and the Hilltop. To that end, the CARE Coalition will engage in the following activities for this pilot. They will engage with the community in learning about adverse childhood experiences, trauma, and resiliency. They will engage with the community in planning for an active response to residents who have or are experiencing trauma. They will provide direct services with community residents for intervention and assistance with access to care for psychosocial and physical trauma. And they will research other best practices for trauma-informed care and resiliency from around the country for learning insight and future planning in our communities. This pilot will engage with key community leaders from these two neighborhoods, including but not limited to churches, nonprofits, and pride centers. Separate community-based planning committees will be established for each of these two neighborhoods, and these committees will engage and meet with residents monthly. In addition to these meetings, community outreach events, mental wellness clinics, vigilance support, and networking events will be held at multiple sites within these communities, again, with the intent of increasing resiliency among our residents.
Thank you, Nancy. This is, this is an important initiative, an important pilot from, I know that its initial work was started by individuals from Columbus Public Health, and certainly in response to a traumatic situation in the west side of our city. And just appreciate the work that was started by your team, certainly, hearing from our residents and obviously seeing what's going on in our community, that there are many people who are dealing with trauma and neighborhoods. And so, this is one response to dealing with some of the trauma. And there's other responses, there's other teams, I know, from, from public, from public safety. There's certainly work being done with the APS program and through recreation and parks. But certainly, this body led by President Klein, and this body certainly recognizing from hearing from the residents how important a program like this happens to be. And hopefully, this pilot in those two neighborhoods will then, will see the success of this program, and then we hope this violence goes down. But certainly, this pilot will help us to help communities to move forward, and the people in those communities to move forward. So, I think, appreciate the work that you, that you've been doing. And I guess the question, just addressing trauma in our community is critical, and so, how do you see this playing a role in violence reduction?
So, this program is action-oriented in that it's going to help to educate and mobilize residents to help themselves take action, because knowledge is power. So, first, you have to understand some of what's behind adverse childhood experiences and trauma, to understand how to respond when people are exhibiting signs of it. And a lot of times, the violence that we see in our community is a response to how we've learned to behave, things that have happened to us as we grew up in a community that itself experiences violence, racism, some of those other parts of our community that we all are trying to work on as a community. So, this program will educate, train, do direct engagement, empowerment, and help residents with access to more mental health services.
Thank you. I'm excited about this program. I know there's going to be the publicly announced on Thursday. It's a great collaboration between council and Columbus Public Health. And I want to thank, I know Erin Beck, who's sitting right next to me, that certainly appreciate the hard work that she has done in helping to move this initiative forward, working with the council. So, just appreciate that work. And just very pleased, because I tell you, if you live, if poverty is traumatic, there's so many things that causes trauma. And so, hopefully, with everyone working together, we can begin to heal our community and move us all forward. So, appreciate this work and looking forward to the implementation of it.
Thank you.
And so, with that, I will, just want to thank everyone for being here this evening. And I hope that this evening's hearing has provided insight into programs and community initiatives from Columbus Public Health, as well as, as finance and, and development. This legislation is so important for our residents, for the finances, for our ongoing city operations, but Columbus Public Health and Development. I think the importance of the work of having community research partners and work that they're doing, because, again, they're helping our community and researching a lot of the issues that we have in our community. So, as residents, these hearings are an opportunity for you to learn and to become engaged in issues that are presented. I'd like to thank this evening's presenters, from the Department of Finance and Management, Chris Long, our Fiscal Officer, Disco Manager, I'm sorry, from the Department of Development, Hannah Reed, the Assistant Director, from Columbus Public Health, Nancy Bectow, Assistant Health Commissioner and Chief Nursing Officer, and then City Council's Legislative Research Office, especially Michael Kessler, who leads the Research, Legislative Research Office, Matt Erickson, who staffs the Finance Committee, Erin Beck, and now Alexis Pennell, who staffs the Health and Human Services Committee, my staff, Nicole Harper and Carl Williams, and then the Long, the hard-working team at CTV, who make these hearings possible. I also want to mention that Erin Beck, who is here this evening, but Erin Beck will be leaving the council team and moving over to the administration, certainly to continue to focus on some of the issues that, around community, women, women's health, and the Women's Commission, really focusing on a lot of women's issues. And so, we, we're just going to say, we're just saying goodbye down the hall. We'll still see her, but she certainly has done a great job working on the, with the council team, and I really have enjoyed her being a part of our team. I also, and finally, I want to thank the residents of Columbus, who make our city the best place in the country to live, work, and to raise a family. Thank you, and the hearing is adjourned.